Okay, Harry, I think we're all ready whenever you are.
Thank you, Chloe. We're now recording. Welcome to this special meeting of the January 11th, 2021, meeting of the City of Charleston Planning Commission. As I said, this is a special meeting of the Planning Commission. And and our agenda today revolves around our comp plan renewal, the Charleston City Plan. We've got a number of reports from our consultant teams, three of them that have been working and we'll hear, we'll have a public comment section. And with that, I believe that I will turn it over to Christopher Morgan. Christopher.
Thanks, Harry. So we've got a ton of information for you all today. This is going to be major information overload. I hope it will be in a digestible form. I think it will be, but this is going to be probably more info than you all have seen in any of our other special meetings on the comprehensive plan, but we are in the thick of it right now. We are literally writing the plan every day and gathering other information. And you will see a lot of what we're basing the plan draft on in today's discussion. And we're eager for you all to see this, and I hope you all feel very free to ask lots of questions. You know, now is the time to let us know if there are things in this that are concerning to you that you want more info on, or you're not understanding or something like that, because we're basing all of our plan on the types of information you're going to be seeing today. So I hope you will give it lots of attention and so much appreciate you all taking time out of your busy schedules to listen in today. And I think with that, Chloe, are you going to start off on the engagement and introduce our consultants on that one?
Yes. Um, so we're, I'm going to be tag teaming with our engagement team to give a planning commission an overview of everything that we did in the first round of engagement and what we heard from folks during those efforts. But first, for all of the engagement team that's here on the call, if you want to unmute yourself and share your video and just introduce yourself before we get started.
Hello, everyone. My name is Fatika Robinson with the Seaco Group.
Hello, everyone. My name is A.J. Davis. I'm with Community Solutions Consulting.
Hello, everyone. My name is Eric Jackson, Community Solutions Consulting.
Hello, everyone. My name is Julie Hussey, and I'm with Civic Communications.
Great, thanks, everyone. And I'm Chloe, super for everyone else on the call. And have been working very closely with our engagement team. In our first round, we engaged over 3,000 residents that participated in some way, shape, or form. Over 300 participated in city-led virtual gatherings. We had 21 of those, had five open listening sessions, so it's not geographically based. One of those was held all in Spanish with simultaneous interpretation for the English speakers. We had 10 area-specific listening sessions, so two for each main area of the city. We had four housing labs and two water labs. The housing labs were structured like listening sessions, whereas the water labs were information primarily for information sharing about our water and land use analysis. Had over 280 participants in community-led sessions, so we had a, excuse me, one second. We, we had 11 different groups and organizations host their own gatherings, whether virtual, in-person, and over 280 people participated in those. And then we had over 2,500 responses to an online survey, and it was also distributed for people to mail in. We used a variety of outreach strategies, including City of Charleston social media. We have a city plan website that also has Spanish language available on it. We have a city plan newsletter, a blog. We worked with our business and neighborhood services to get out information on the Hey Neighbor newsletter. No contact street canvassing, primarily by A.J. and Eric getting out there to spread the word via postcards and flyers. And then we also partnered with Charleston Aqui Estamos and Community Solutions Consulting for their using their Facebook platforms to help get out the word as well, and of course, press releases. My apologies, my dog has chosen this time to get out his spooky toys. So I've had to confiscate them, okay. So I'm going to try and move through these really quickly. We had about 30 questions on the survey, and it was a lot of really great information. I'm only going to go over the quantitative results today, not the qualitative. One, because I haven't had a chance to come through all of it yet, but also it's just too much information to cover in the limited time we have. Also, I don't want to make leave time for our engagement team to go through the takeaways from the listening sessions. So a little bit about who participated. Only a quarter work in the City of Charleston, 32% of those on the peninsula. The second highest was West Ashley and North Charleston following that. 14% said not applicable, so presumably unemployed or retired. We got a lot of respondents from outside of the City of Charleston, who are living in the region, but not within city limits. And a fair amount, 30, 30 responses, it was a small percentage number, but 30 responses from folks who live in the City of Charleston, but do not own a home or rent a residence. Got a good mixture across tenure in terms of how long people have been a community member of Charleston. My dog is being so loud right now, I really apologize. Um, we had 5% of respondents are Spanish speakers, 4% speak other languages, and then we had 10 respondents identified as gender queer and non-binary. Our survey, though strong in numbers, was not fully representative of the population of the City of Charleston. So I've flagged here where we got an over-representation of results and under-representation. And then throughout the survey results, I have highlighted some key differences among results for the categories that are underrepresented, so that we're getting a fuller picture of what it, maybe what we, some changes we may have seen had we gotten a more representative sample. So we are overrepresented among white respondents, folks who live in lower part of the peninsula and ages 35 and above. We were under, we had underrepresentation from tenants, lower-income folks, and I've specified here what I mean by that. And in terms of annual income, black, African-American respondents, folks who live in the Upper Peninsula, James Island, and then youth, so age 24 and younger. So we asked questions related to transportation, mobility, housing, flooding challenges. What the way that I've structured these results, I'm first going to start with how questions that we ask that help us define existing conditions, what people are experiencing now, and then group together the questions that look forward and to recommendations and for the, for the plan. So starting with flooding, 20, 20% responded that their home or property has been damaged by flooding in the past. This was higher for youth, tenants, and lower-income respondents. 78% are concerned, either somewhat or very concerned about being impacted by flooding in the future. And it was a pretty even split between those who haven't and have taken actions to protect their home or property from flood damage. The percentage of folks who have taken actions was lower among youth and tenants. And I did want to note that it was for those who said not applicable, so presumably they don't have control over protecting, you know, actions to protect their home or property. But that amount was double, that percentage was double for black and African-American respondents, lower-income respondents, youth, and tenants. For housing and mobility, 41% are somewhat or very concerned about being able to stay in their current housing. This was higher for black and African-American respondents, Upper Peninsula respondents, and much higher for lower-income respondents, youth, and tenants. 87% use personal cars as primary mode of transportation, followed by walking and then biking. These other, these alternative modes of transportation, there are more than just walking and biking. That, more tenants and lower-income respondents chose alternative modes of transportation as their primary mode. And I thought it was interesting, 4% of black, African-American respondents use rideshare service. This is a much higher percentage than overall, and then 3.4% of youth carpool as their primary mode. Yeah.
The, the first stat up there, the 41% that said they're concerned, is that just a general concern, or is that an economic-related concern? Is it flooding? Or just?
Great question. There, there's a follow-up question to that, which is an open-ended response, which is explaining what their concern is or lack thereof. And so we have that information, and it just have not compiled it yet. But it was, from what I remember just giving over it, it was a mixture of economic and flooding-related. For employment and the economy, we had a question about what is a list of options for people to select from, what it, what makes it difficult for them to obtain a job in their preferred field or to be able to advance in their current field. So the highest ones, understandably accessible pay rate, limited job openings, followed by affordable office and/or commercial space, not going to read through all of these. But what was more interesting to me was that when I broke it, excuse me, when I broke it down to the underrepresented categories for black and African-American respondents, they had double the percentages for citing access to loans, whether it be business or education, educational loans as being a primary, as being a hurdle. And then for youth and lower-income respondents, again, double the percentage when it came to lack of access to reliable transportation. And then we did ask to, at the end of the survey, just how folks have been impacted by COVID. Majority chose, selected lost income or changed work location or commute, followed by children's education being negatively impacted. For black and African-American respondents, lower-income respondents, youth, and tenants, there were three, the percentage was three to five times higher across those groups for reporting losing housing or being at risk of losing housing. And then it was roughly double the percentage reporting losing a job for lower-income respondents, youth, and tenants. So now, looking forward, starting with the first question, which I apologize to everyone who took the survey, I heard a lot of feedback, they didn't like it because they didn't want to have to choose. This was a ranking question. We forced people to rank these, and so one takeaway from this is that all of, I, I hope that no one reads this as the the items on the bottom of the list not being important to quality of life. I think all of these, we can agree, are important to quality of life, and there was an, an other option, so there's more, more ideas. But these, these five here that I have highlighted, bolded in orange, when I looked, when I broke it down, looked through each of the underrepresented categories, these five here that are bolded stood, were consistently in the top five for each of those groups. Whereas when you look at it overall, it's a different top five. So I did want to pull out that difference here. For flooding, we asked, we shared a list of recommendations that came out of the Dutch Dialogue Study for how the city can decrease impacts of flooding and better manage water, and asked which folks would support, and it was to check as many as apply. So this was not a ranking. So you can see here where we're seeing more support for improve and maintain drainage infrastructure, with the least support for prioritizing areas of the city at higher elevation for higher density development. This is consistent with all underrepresented categories, so there wasn't really any notable differences there. For the sake of time, I'm not going to read through each of these, but I'm going to pause to let y'all look at these before we move on. We also listed a list, or provided a list of housing strategies that other cities have used, that have come out of some of the reports that we've worked, the city has worked on. And saw the most support for mixed-income development, and the least for allowing duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. There was a difference among the underrepresented categories. There was generally more support for all of these tools, from black and African-American respondents, lower-income respondents, youth, tenants, and Upper Peninsula residents. With one interesting difference for the strategy of encouraging smaller private yards and more shared community, open space, black and African-American respondents, there was only 38% versus what you see here being 50% of black and African-American respondents who are in support of that strategy. Okay, so this was, which of the following does your neighborhood lack that you wish you had nearby? So again, all of these things are great things to have nearby, but thinking about what's, what's maybe lacking. And one thing that we'll do when we are putting together land use recommendations for each area of the city is we'll break this down by zip code for each area of the city, so we can see those differences. But this is just citywide. And so some notable differences from the underrepresented categories. Black and African-American respondents selected employment options and offices more often. Lower-income respondents selected employment options, offices, trade workshops, parks, community centers, and cultural institutions more often. Tenants selected employment options, offices, trade workshops, grocery stores, cultural institutions more often, and then youths selected employment options, parks, community centers, grocery stores, and cultural institutions. And then we asked a question about if respondents would like to see more land and water access preserved for recreational public use, and 86% said yes. And finally, with mobility, 76 responded that they would walk, 76%, that they would walk or bike to places they go often if they had a safe and convenient way to do so. And among all underrepresented groups, with the exception of black and African-American respondents, a higher percentage than 76% answered yes. 46 responded that they would use a water taxi daily, weekly, or monthly if it were offered as a public transportation option. So less than half, but then when you looked across the underrepresented categories, that flipped, and it was consistently over half for all of those underrepresented categories that would use it daily, weekly, or monthly. Youth were the, there was the highest percentage of youth that responded daily, three times higher than the overall. Right, that is the survey result. Quickest that I could get through. Do y'all have any questions before we move on to listening sessions? Great. All right, I will pass it to, who am I passing it to? Fatika or A.J.?
A.J.
A.J. All right, oh, sorry, I forgot, housing lab. We, staff-led housing lab listening sessions, four of them overall. Just to get a little bit more into the conversation of affordability, gentrification, and displacement, and defining what the housing challenge is and what some recommendations might be. So some, here are some of the takeaways from how, how the housing challenges have been defined. So gentrification and displacement being a loss of physical and cultural sense of place that a lot of the challenges and the cost of home maintenance, especially for elderly residents, that there's high eviction rates, so it's not just, you know, housing creation, but keeping folks in housing, that their housing barriers beyond cost and not just looking at affordability. When people can afford to move, they often get stuck in substandard housing. Absentee landlords are an issue. Neighborhoods, when gentrification also looks like neighborhoods becoming consumer destinations, it's not always just who is now living there and who's not. With the rising property taxes, rising land values, it increases the profit motive and also affects affordability, but, and, and there's concerns about this getting worse with sea level rise. And, and with that, and flooding, flood insurance costs are a real problem, and flood damage, being able to repair after flood damage. And then for recommendations, housing for all income levels, including folks who make no income, all life stages, all household sizes, allowing for a mixture of housing types and neighborhoods. Looking to Wagner Terrace and Old Windermere is great examples of that, building up and in, not out, so avoiding sprawl, allowing smaller homes and smaller lots, encouraging sustainability and creativity, prioritizing investing in long-time black residents and business owners. Looking into the impact of Board of Architectural Review standards, so there was an agreement on what the impact is, so recommendation to look into that. Provide support and education to tenants, collaborate regionally, it's a regional problem, so it needs regional solutions. Housing costs won't address the problem alone, need to also look into wages, food insecurity, health insurance. And homelessness needs to be more of a focus in this conversation, not just affordable housing creation. So, sorry about that. Now I'm going to pass it to A.J.
Chloe, before you pass that, on that, on that recommendations, were those y'all's recommendations based on what you heard, or are those what the public recommended? Because those seem in conflict with some things that the survey said.
Thank you. Thank you for that question, Donna, and I should have prefaced the slides with, with that. So for this and the slides coming after this, this is relaying what we heard from folks in the listening session. So this is not staff recommendations, this is not, these are recommendations that people made that came out of the listening session, so directly from residents. My, the inconsistency that you are pointing out is probably due to the group of people who participated in these may represent a different demographic than the overall participation in the survey.
Well, and I also think it's an education process problem, because people think about, for example, mix of housing types. You know, they don't realize that there are very productive neighborhoods that have these right now, and they just see them as all single-family residential until they get in there. And so we have a kind of a black-white issue, if you will, that's like either a single-family residential neighborhood or a high-rise apartment complex. And when they're asked a question like this, they pick the either-or and not realize the middle, which is, I've been so, you know, educated on missing middle, and people don't realize that really does exist in some neighborhoods right now. So I think part of the answers are an education process, too. So I want to be careful as we interpret them, you know? Thank you.
Great, thank you, Donna. Okay, now I'm passing it to A.J., I apologize for that earlier.
All right, well, thank you, Chloe. Welcome and hello, Happy New Year to everyone for the meeting. I hope everyone had a great and safe holiday. Our team, along with the planning department, have been compiling and, and winding down the Phase One engagement session for the city plan. So what you see on this slide are some of the overall themes that we gleaned from the, the notes that we all transcribed and siphoned through. First, we saw that overall, a lot of people wanted a multimodal transit improvement to make sure there's modes of transportation for everyone's lifestyle. Everyone does not have a car. Some people are relegated to using public transportation. Some people, as Chloe shared in one of the previous slides, use rideshare. So they want to have multimodal transit improvements that can accommodate all of those things. Of course, the usual suspect of flooding and drainage was a theme we heard throughout. No matter what part of the city that we were in, overall, people recognize that flooding causes tremendous impacts, especially as it relates to traffic and transportation. Another overall theme we heard was that we need more pedestrian access to walkable roads to get around in communities. I think we heard that significantly in areas like Johns Island and West Ashley as well. But overall, that was something that was in a lot of the notes that we compiled. Also, there was an idea of developing an equitable quality of life for all. I think as Chloe referenced in the previous slide, a lot of people enjoy living here in Charleston. However, they feel as though, as the city grows, sometimes the ability for everybody to enjoy all of the, the benefits of Charleston is not made available to everyone. And then there was the theme of cultural preservation. We are in a historic city, and as such, people want to maintain that image, that identity, while they also recognize that growth and development also somewhat changes that landscape. But they do want an effort to be put forth to maintain what made Charleston a home for them. Next slide. All right, so the themes that we got from the listening sessions by area, and this is by no stretch of the imagination, everything. But in transcribing the notes, we wanted to make sure that we saw things that were uniform throughout and wasn't, and were not repeated. So please understand that this is just a, a small gleaning, but these were some of the most significant things that we saw and we read when we transcribed notes. So on the peninsula, transportation, equitable building codes and processes for small businesses. A lot of times we think about housing, but we also saw that a lot of the conversation around the business community was very significant. Eliminating gentrification with cultural preservation and cost of living affordability. Again, we see a lot of the Again, we see a lot of the new buildings and whatnot being built, and I think folks were saying that they wanted to also maintain some of the aesthetic that currently exists within the Peninsula. For James Island, we saw that flooding again was a concern amongst others for the historic African-American communities out on the island. Transportation infrastructure, safety, pedestrian and bike rider accessibility. They also spoke about inconsistencies in coordinating between the town, city, and county regarding public services. They expressed concern regarding the scale and location of development, they felt that it was too large and too fast. Johns Island, they wanted preservation of the existing identity, rural agriculture of the island and its communities. They do not want to become downtown Charleston 2.0. They desire mixed-use home development, not just single-family, and adamant about the preservation of the indigenous African-American populations. Next slide. And West Ashley, West Ashley, we saw an appreciation of connectivity, although there are still areas of improvement. They would like to see increased marketing of the area to businesses for economic development, improved economic development, and also increase diverse housing options for the area, which kind of speaks to what I think Ms. Donna was talking about. It may be an educational option. For the Kane Hoi Peninsula, Wando Area, and Daniel Island, we had the preservation of the Jack Promise Community, along with local green spaces, protect the Longleaf pine forest. They also expressed a desire to have better neighborhood connectivity, access to waterways, improving transportation utilizing waterway access with a proposed ferry system. And they put specific emphasis on the preservation of the historic nature of the area. At this particular time, I'm going to transfer over to my colleague, Fatika Robinson, and she will take you through the next round of slides.
Good afternoon, everyone, thank you, AJ. So, one of the, one of the things that we were very adamant about is making sure that when we think of diversity, we don't automatically think of African-Americans or those of African descent. So, we live in a very diverse city, and oftentimes, we might have our blinders on, but there are other communities outside of that, of white and Black that do live with amongst us. Of that is the Hispanic and Latinx community. And so, we partnered, well, we specifically held this particular session to make sure that they felt, felt comfortable to be in the same space with each other versus being in the midst of others where they'd have troubles with translation or with understanding. So, we were able to do this with Art Pot, and so, which is a Hispanic nonprofit organization that focuses on serving the Latinx and Hispanic community, specifically grassroots as well. This was a great partnership, and this was very big for the city for this year. So, what we did hear from them specifically was something that's, you know, it's not a surprise, they are just like all of us, they want a sense of community and they want to feel connected to the city. In the midst of that, however, they do have language justice, and quality of life is a big, a big area for them. When they focus, when we focus on inclusion and understanding, not all that, not all of the Hispanic community speaks the same language, and they often have concerns about their documentation, so they might not be as, as visual, as visual as attending things because they're concerned of what may happen if they go to that versus a sense of welcoming. There, because we're speaking of the Charleston area, majority of Hispanic community and Latinx live in the Johns Island area. So, the rural community and centrality to benefits of life really are important to them, and that's provided in that space. However, in that, the quality of streets, the lack of lighting, and the poor signage are problem areas in which they need to be able to know where they're going and how to get there. They also desire a place when it comes to outside with parks and recreation, a space that more highlights them to be able to commune with their families and youth. Their, the specific ideas are soccer fields, that's not a surprise to many, that is very huge in their culture, as well as baseball fields, libraries, and places for work. They are also looking at bike lanes and sidewalks would be helpful on the main streets, especially to connect neighborhoods and at the high school as well. Personally, a quote that was taken is that, you know, gentrification hurts. It feels awful when you're trying to fight to keep this harmony and unity within your culture and your community, only to see yourselves being pushed out. So, they want to feel important, it's important to them to feel connected to their community, especially when you have language barriers. They also feel like the city should invest and welcome the Hispanic and Latinx community because they feel that they want, they want to feel like this is their home, and they want to feel connected, and they want to feel welcomed in this space, especially as they continue to root themselves here and their children begin to grow. As we moved into the community-led sessions, this was an opportunity for other organizations within the community outside of the city to host meetings. Again, this would be just like the Hispanic-Latinx community, which was an affinity group because it was only focused on there. These were affinity groups that could be organizations that serve the African-American community or specific areas of focus within the community. So, those organizations are here as listed, the American Institute of Architects, the Cico Group, Center for Airs Property, Charleston Area Justice Ministry, Charleston Climate Coalition, Coastal Conservation League, Community Solutions Consulting, Enough Pi, Low Country Black Parents Association, Low Country Local First, and Preservation Society of Charleston. All of these areas focus on, obviously, the architects and structure, heirs property when it pertains to African-Americans and heirs property and how that's connected. You all should know that Charleston Area Justice Ministry is a connection of various congregations within the city of Charleston that they were covering, that they brought together to make sure that voice was heard. Obviously, climate, we know about Conservation League and the Low Country Black Parents Association and Community Solutions Consulting partnered together to specifically host affinity groups focused on the African-American and Black community. And Low Country Local First is about small businesses and obviously focusing on local connection and local buying. And then we have the Preservation Society. Of all of these groups, which were eleven that came together, they held a combination of virtual and socially-distanced sessions that totaled two hundred and eighty-three people that they reached. The themes of the community-led sessions were focused on the need for more diversity with community engagement for African-American, Latinx, and Hispanic communities. The lack of literacy about the city and its offerings, meaning that there's, there may be an assumption that people know that residents and community members know what's happening within the city, but that is not the same, they don't always know what's happening or what the offerings are. And so, that disconnect impacts the way people live and engage from a historical context here in the Charleston area. Multi-modal, excuse me, transportation options are needed. Safe bus stops and bus routes should support people who actually use the service every day. Outside of MUSC, for example, we have multiple bus stops, but they're not always in a safe location, or some of them are covered and some are not. And then also the actual bus routes, there's, there was a, there was a concern of how long it takes for the buses to come back through. So, often, people are waiting up to an hour to two hours or having to space that in between. And when you're trying to come for a shift or trying to get someplace, that's an issue. So, their desire is to have multiple options for transportation so people can get around very quickly and effectively in the community. Affordable housing that will support working class. There's a, they feel it is a disconnect between developers being accountable for, if they're going to build a hotel or other buildings, there should also be an accountability to match that with housing because majority of the people who are working there are the working class. And so, if we're going to build these buildings, let's keep in mind that the same individuals need to have access to their work, to their work in their home without having the issues of transportation. When it comes to small businesses, they are impacted due to flooding. A lot of times, they have to shut down and they have to reap that deficit that they lose due to the flooding in the area. They really feel like we should hold developers accountable if, or excuse me, I'm sorry, I went up too high. They feel like there should be some options for free parking for their employees, as well as no meters after business hours, and also, again, providing diverse transportation options. There's also encourage more ways to protect areas from flooding beyond retention ponds and seek balance between quality of built environment and associated cost. And then, cultural preservation when it comes to African-American native history and indigenous lands and communities, ensuring that as we're building and expanding here in Charleston, that we're reminded, just the same way we would be for land, that there is a desire to preserve African-American native history and indigenous lands in the community for a sense of home and community. So, our takeaways overall is what seems to be an overlying running from all of the sessions that were held is that there's an overwhelming consensus to see consistency between the words and actions of the city and this plan. So, there's a desire to, if, if people are participating, they want to make sure that whatever they, they shared or desire to see shows up in a codifying way to, to affect their lives in a better way, based on the actions or responses to what was shared. There's more work to be done, and there's an understanding with that as it relates to improving diversity and community relationships. The community honestly just wants to see that there's a ongoing communication and engagement that happens with, between the city and all the things that are happening, as well as with the residents. The importance of synergy between the city departments with regards to the plan. There's, if questions come up and then it's connected to another department, they feel like it would be great if all departments or representative would be connected so that all those questions or any thoughts can be shared at that time, again, with engagement and communications lining the overall feedback. Safety means different things to different people, the safety of some is often prioritized over the safety of others. There was just a concern for what does safety mean and how it's responded to if there's any concerns from residents. So, just understanding that safety overall is desired by everyone, regardless of their race or economic status, socioeconomic status, they desire, everyone desires safety, and safety is different for many different groups and what that looks like. So, a good example overall of this takeaway is that we heard the experience of various residents and their views on development as not just a planning or financial issue, but also as a feeling of certain groups being unwelcomed or ignored when it comes to planning efforts. We, they, we also heard a desire for the city to solicit more authentic engagement, feedback and input from communities impacted by the plan. And the overall goal is just, again, communications and engagement, continue to communicate because you can't do one without the other, and that's all the residents are really asking for, and just for an understanding overall that they want a safe quality of life, just like everyone else, but treated equitably, or seen as equitably across the board for every resident. And I am passing it back over to AJ to talk about round two, unless y'all want to ask questions before we say what we're going to do in round two. No questions at all? Okay, thank you, AJ.
Alright, thank you, Fatika. So, in round two, the objective would be to share the findings from the analysis in round one engagement, present a draft plan, recommendations, and then gather feedback. Our goals in round two would be to engage with populations who were not involved with round one. As Chloe shared on an earlier slide, we knew that we had an over-representation in predominantly white communities and higher socio-economic statuses. Our intention in round two, however, is to not necessarily ignore those communities. We will definitely double back and re-engage them, but will also divert a lot more of our efforts into making sure that we get a greater percentage of tenants, younger individuals, members of the African-American community, also members of the older communities as well, and any of the geographic areas within the city that might not have been hit to the fullest. We want to build on the momentum of the engagement for round one. We feel that although COVID-19 has definitely hampered a lot of the engagement efforts, and as we see the numbers continuing to spike, we do want to come up with a creative strategy to make sure that people know that this plan is still being developed and that they're still being included and their impact, input, and feedback is still desired. We want to ensure that the communication regarding the plan is effective, consistent, and authentic. As Fatika said in earlier slide, the residents that took part in the listening sessions and those gave feedback on the surveys want to make sure that their input and feedback is going to contribute to the creation of this plan and that the final plan will reflect that. And so, we want to make sure that as we re-engage for round two, that assumption is lived up to on our part. Based on the data from round one, again, we said increased engagement among demographic groups that have historically not been engaged, and that are specifically African-Americans, Latinx, Hispanic, college students, homeless populations, et cetera. I do want to take the time also to thank the Planning Department for their extreme flexibility and support in us being able to engage in round one. It was not, by any stretch of the imagination, an easy task, and as I think all of us on this call can attest to, we are definitely in different times in terms of how public contact and communication takes place. However, we feel confident that the first round was reflective of a genuine concerted effort on the part of not only ourselves as consultants, but the city planning department to engage as broad a representation of the city of Charleston as possible. So, that being said, I don't know if there are now any questions, or are we ready to move forward in the presentation?
Looks like Donna has a question.
I actually have several kind of comments and questions because I was taking some pictures of these slides as we went along, and I'm going to assume this presentation will be available in our Dropbox later, Chloe, can I make that assumption?
You can, yeah.
Okay, great, okay, but I was taking pictures as I went along because some things were standing out for me. And this might sound confusing right now because I was trying to put my head together, but I noticed that there are a lot of themes. But when I step back to what we actually have to do here, the comprehensive plan by state law has to have these nine elements, and we've added resilience as an element. Did we ever break down all of these comments and themes in there as they relate to those elements? And are those elements like have certain priorities within regions of this city? Like, or, for example, even though we have to look at all these elements and speak to them, are there some of these elements that have greater importance or resonate greater with a certain population in a certain part of the city? That's kind of a comment. And I'm glad to hear that we're doing round two because I've had a brief conversation with Chloe about that because oftentimes, I mean, it took me a long time to understand what a comprehensive plan was. So, I'm sure just the average citizen doesn't really know how to get their head around what a comprehensive plan means. And oftentimes, people, when they come to a blank board, it's hard to write something on it, but when they see the synthesis that y'all have done so well, they go, wait a minute, I didn't realize that was part of it, and I have a comment toward that, so I'm glad there's going to be round two with, with a synthesis of these themes and ideas getting back into the community. But I've also had this thought that sometimes quantity of people is not as important as quality of people. And what I mean by that is to make sure that we've identified this underrepresented group. Do we even know who they are, and are, are there any leaders within that group? Two or three people who have connections into the community, who can facilitate the understanding, the information? Because even Fatika talked about lack of literacy within this, so, you know, that's, that's a hard challenge. I know that we've been working on that very hard, but I just would hope that we made sure that you had a list of underrepresented. Tenants are going to be particularly hard, that's even true in my neighborhood where we're rentals. They don't even know they can participate in our neighborhood association because they think it's a homeowners association. We're constantly fighting that battle, even in my neighborhood. So, I just want to kind of hear a little bit about how we're going to review those, all those themes that y'all gave and how we might engage further with these leaders of people that we don't even know exist. It's kind of like the known unknown. I think everybody on the call knows that we don't know some of these things, but how are we going to effectively get there, get to the leaders, have them review this stuff? But how are we going to effectively get there, get to the leaders, have them review this stuff? And I'm going to stop there because otherwise it starts becoming a big distracted conversation around this from, from my point of view. Thank you.
All right. I'm not sure if, if you were asking Ms. Donna. I'll take a stab at it. And again, thank you for not only your question today, but your overwhelming support. Throughout this entire process, being in several of these listening sessions yourself. And in fielding questions and comments and everything that you said is exactly true. And it's a part of the engagement strategy that we're putting forth in the second round. Because we do recognize that we have to also concentrate our efforts. In the underrepresented communities with an eye of making sure that. Not only are we providing them with the information and the opportunity for feedback, but in cases where it is in fact necessary. Educating them on exactly what this is. And so we do have a couple of listings. Of community leaders, neighborhood organizations and groups specifically that we will be reaching out to. And the planning department, Chloe specifically, has also facilitated kind of a infrastructure of how we will do that. Myself and Eric and, and the rest of our. The possibility of having kind of have a quick hit educational model, module for people who we will engage with that had no familiarity. No contact with the first round, because we know coming in to say, hey, do you want to participate in something that they have no familiarity with? Is going to be just like cold calling. However, I think because we have now compiled a, a draft report and we have this presentation. We do have some tools and resources that will be useful to us to kind of hit a high level of information. That we can present to those individuals that you listed. And also kind of have a everyday man on the street type script that we can use to provide them the opportunity to give feedback if they so choose.
Thank you for that AJ and I, I want to reiterate my commitment. I'll be there to listen. I've been trying to do that. I've been working with Chloe on the settlement community aspect, which is a little subset of all this. And I've met a lot of new people and, and found some people who have given us a lot of good information and feedback. So I'm still committed to that. I just wanted to also add a comment because this is something Fatika said. And I, I found it also part of the interesting discussion is that safety means different things to different people. And most of the time when we talk about safety, we just think about crime. And safety isn't just about crime. It's about feeling comfortable that my roof isn't going to leak when I go to sleep at night. Or, you know, feeling that, you know, I won't be flooded when it floods. So there's different levels of safety. And I'm glad that y'all are expanding that definition to people because I think that's real important that we understand. It's, things aren't just, you know, myopic criminal. And, and crime can be just like my neighbor is complaining about my yard all the time. There's just a social pressure of I've been, I'm made to feel uncomfortable in my neighborhood. Therefore I feel unsafe going. Even into my yard to have a party because somebody's going to call about. And those are very tiny little things, but I'm really glad that y'all are looking at that because I think that. Creates a dynamic about how we plan a neighborhood or how we plan community spaces and how we plan to encourage people to use those things. That we're going to recommend in the plan is that it is diverse and everybody feels safe in the space. So I'm, I'm glad y'all are adding these dimensions to it. And I'm going to stop now because I'm going to, I could go off on a lot of aspects right now. Thank you.
Well, Donna, I just wanted to say that honestly, we really did appreciate your presence at every meeting and those that could pop in when they could. It, I will say that it did make a difference when, especially in the breakout sessions when you were present, because you were in a lot of mine. Where the question came up or understanding of clarity, you were able to add back reference on behalf of the planning commission. To answer a question or make something clear. And I feel like that was a part of the literacy 101. Because we can do our best to cram in as much to prep them before we get to the breakouts. But having someone there when you're having those conversations and start to talk and dialogue. To help you understand what you're thinking about or what you should be thinking about and. Answer any questions that are assumptions that you don't know that's happening. It, it does make a big difference. And just to add on to the last thing that you said, I think that's very important for people to understand. Community is different. The word community is used different at, for different groups of people. So within people of color, community is a sense of it's all things. It's, it's family, it's neighborhood, it's zip code. It's my friends, it's everything. That's community. When, and non, a majority of white communities or that we heard with dialogue might use neighborhood and think of community. So it's just different when we're, when we're talking about reference to where you live. When you hear someone talk about community, it's not minusing the city. It's, it's stating that where I live as a whole and everything I do in this space. Is my community. What, the place where I live, just my zip code is not just the neighborhood in which, but it's my community overall. So just want to make sure that's stated because a lot of times that can be missed and it's a good literacy lesson for all of us. As we, as we diversify our thoughts and our minds as we continue to really have authentic engagement.
And, and I'm going to add, that's a strong point because something y'all said about John's Island wanted to stay rural and agricultural and not Charleston 2.0. Kate put a square peg in a round hole. I mean, we need to respect the, this, this basic character. West Ashley, quite suburban. Daniel Island, very planned community. The peninsula, organic and old and historic. James Island, once again, a suburban, but at a different level. John's Island, rural, but, but changing. So we need to respect that description, if you will, of these, what the mayor has called boroughs. Before we just try to cram a plan of a square peg in a round hole to all of them. We need to understand their individualities first. And I think that's coming out loud and clear in those listening sessions and then some of that compilation of things that y'all laid out. And then, then it helps us plan around that community that lives on John's Island, you know? So, thank you for that, Fatika.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. And, and I just wanted to say to the team here, how much, how grateful I am for this outreach. I think it's safe to say that this is the most aggressive outreach we've done on a city plan. Christopher, you could probably speak to that better than anybody on this particular, at this particular meeting. But I think for me, the phase two, as important as phase one has been, phase two might be more important. Because now, you know, we've, we've got a draft or we've got some ideas and now we need to go test those. And, and I think, I think the importance, I mean, there are, every phase is important. So I don't want to overstate this. But, but getting a diverse group of people from all parts of the city, looking at what our drafts are. Might be even more effective because, you know, giving people a blank sheet of paper and saying, okay, what do you want? Is, can be difficult. I mean, I, I participated in our meeting here on James Island. And, and you know, the, the discussion was great. It was a great meeting, but it was, you know, kind of all over the map and not really focused. Well, now, you know, as Ms. Jacob said, the, getting people to understand what a comp plan is, is, can be difficult. So now when they, when they see what a draft looks like and to see the kinds of things we're addressing. I think being able to respond to the draft ideas that are being put out there is, is going to be really important. And, and so anyway, I, I just, I'm grateful to this, to this consultant team and all the hard work. And, and really, and it's such a challenging time, probably no more challenging a time has ever existed to try to get public feedback. In a process like this. So tip of the cap and thank you and let's keep up the good work.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you. And I do want to reiterate that we are so appreciative of the planning department. Because again, planning for engagement in a pandemic, I think is rather unprecedented. And especially when folks are afraid of physical contact and, you know, of course this virus and this impact. But we still saw a lot of people in all of the sessions who were truly committed to seeing this plan be something that's beneficial for all. So I want to say that.
And Chloe, if I just have one second, I did want to add that what was a, a underlying thing that came out at times in conversations? That people actually, even though we had to by default do virtual, people really appreciated not having to drive downtown. And find parking to get to a space to have a meeting. They really appreciated being the login at, in their home. At a convenient time as a choice of two and then be able to participate. I think that on top of that, Harry, what you might have sensed, we really tried hard to ensure that within these spaces. That we had an hour and a half of everybody's attention, that it felt like community. It felt like connection, that we were engaging, you know? Noticing things on people's screens, pulling out stuff, you know, trying to create that sense of if you were in person, we would be noticing you. But to know that you're not just in a virtual space disconnected, but we're trying to create community as much as possible in this time that we have. I think that helped to break down some barriers and maybe created that space area where you said like people were all over. Maybe people felt excited just to be able to share with people about what they were going through and to hear those like-minded conversations. And challenges and also pluses that they love about Charleston. So we are definitely going to continue that. And our team was very committed to creating that kind of space and the planning department was on board with that too. So it was great. We had a great time. We really did.
I think Angie has her hand up.
I do. I just wanted to add, I'm obviously in a car waiting room here, but I wanted to add, thank you so much for all you're doing. I learned a lot through this. I just wanted to share that I appreciate everything. So great education and just wanted to thank you for all you're doing. And look forward to the next, next session, next section.
You are too. Thank you.
Okay. Before we move on to our housing updates, Eddie Vine, staff with Housing and Community Development Department. Do you still have a question, Eddie? I saw you raise your hand earlier. Okay. We can come, oh, we'll come back to him. Okay.
Chloe, I just wanted to state that if, because Julie or Eric didn't get a chance to speak, if they wanted to say something before we moved on. I didn't know if they wanted to. If not, we'll keep going.
Now just look forward to round two.
Yeah. Um, yeah. I, I just wanted to amplify that. I think that's critical as Harry said earlier. And I think what you're going to find, what you will probably find in some of these communities, it's, it's just that. What they are most afraid of is that with all of the development moving on and down the peninsula. And other fringes of the city is that, that their community will not get the same type of attention. And still be called their community, the nuances and all of the important thing that they grew up with. They want to see that. A good example would be somebody mentioned John's Island. I know there's a lot of, of excitement about development on John's Island, for example. And, and there are a lot of historic places on John's Island. And I think that once folks see that there is a genuine concern that those communities will be. Will be restored or redevelopment and redeveloped. And therefore that, that legacy that has, that, that has been there for years. With all the people that have grown up there and have done so much for that era, area, that that's the educational piece in itself. So preserving their history, their neighborly history is important. And so when AJ, and to, and Ms. Robbins, when you go back. I think that is the thing that has to be amplified, that they know that. And, and they, they may not say that, but I can tell you that that's what they're thinking. Another one is, I don't know what we're doing to, with Hugi, Kanehorn. To basic. They have been trying, they've been talking about, they've been talking about doing a development in an area for, for years. 20 years, 30 years maybe. And there are people who have. You know, they see what happened with Daniel, you know, with the larger part of Daniel Island. But they're hamlet in a part of that neighborhood of that, of that area. That's what they're looking for. That's the genuineness that will give this credence. And will give this trust and confidence that their, that their neighborhood is not going to be built up. And they be left out of it. You know, you know, what I'm saying is for a place like Kanehorn, for example. You know, they don't want to see that area developed so that somebody comes and build a beautiful mansion back there and put all these big fences up. I mean, that has to stop, you know? So, so probe that question when you go there so that you can make sure. Once you can show and demonstrate that this is what's going to happen. At the end of the day, all of the communities will be well-recognized. People that helped build the communities will be recognized and that legacy will be there for the, for the young people that still live there. We can see that. So I think that, that, that's, that is critical. But otherwise, I think I've, everything you've said, the reports that have come out and it made a lot of sense. I think Chloe has worked very hard, Ms. Chloe. And if that continues, then it's, it's, everybody wins. Mr. Jackson, you agree with that?
Yes, sir. We appreciate your words. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate that too. This is Julie. I just wanted to elevate some of the things that were said, I think really about Fatika's comments about community and neighborhood. And in some of the neighborhoods, I mean, really the difference, I think even there's a difference between Donna, your neighborhood. And the neighborhoods that are a planned neighborhood that has been marketed for years and, you know, really recently in years to sell homes. As a, it's a commercial and there's a lot of, there's a lot of money and effort behind those neighborhoods. And so, and a lot of rules and a lot of other things that are really different. So, so I think what I heard in Mr. Vine's comment that was so strong is that, that a lot of the neighborhoods that are not. They don't want to be the planned neighborhood of the new neighborhoods, but they do want to be acknowledged for their structure, what they have. And not just seen as something waiting to be planned, but as something that already does have a, a planning. So I think, I thought that was something that really came up that was really interesting to me. And, and I do, I, I will also encourage, I think Donna, as you were saying, and as it came up as well, is, is. As a group perhaps at a workshop or something else, to really consider having a deep discussion about safety and what safety means. This, this process took place in a time where, where a lot of feelings were raw about that topic on a lot of different. There were a lot of other things that were going on beyond just this planning exercise. And, and I think that a lot of times, that a lot of our rules and a lot of our, our planning and zoning is done about safety. And different things and kind of what does that mean to y'all and what does, and how can? How can the planning department, how can the planning process be a, a place that, that one of the safeties that we protect is the dignity of all the people? So with that, thank you so much. This has been such a pleasure and it just, the, the principles that y'all set out from the beginning. Watching those really be held up and, and utilized has just been amazing. And I've, I've really been honored to be on this team and to be with all of y'all.
Thanks everyone so much for your great commentary. And thank you Eddie for also sharing for everyone who does not, everyone here who does not know Eddie. He's the manager of the city's rehabilitation program. Has been with the city for a very long time. So appreciate Eddie for being here and for sharing that. We have a lot still to cover. Updates from our housing analysis team and our water and land use team. So I'll go ahead and Jim, do you want me to share the slides again or would you like, would you prefer to? Jim, okay, can't hear you. So can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now it's in here.
Yeah. So I, I think it's fine if you share the slide. They're, they're in the same slideshow that you were showing before. So. You don't mind?
Sure.
And I'm just going to turn it over to our housing analysis consultants with community data platforms. Well, actually Chloe, you might need to refresh your screen because I was, I was playing with it a little bit during the presentation. Great. Yeah, so I'll turn it over um to our um consultants with community data platforms. I think we have with us Anna Tap and Remy Beverage. Um, and yeah, I'm not sure which one of you would like to present, but um, go ahead and chime in.
Hey everybody, my name is Remy Beverage. Thanks for the introduction, Jim. Um, I am a project manager for community data platforms and with me, I have Anna Tap. She is our lead data scientist. And so we will be giving an update on the housing analysis and then fielding any questions that come up or comments, concerns, any of the above. Um, and so we just kind of, to talk about it, you just heard a lot about of the, the stories that are being told by the community members and kind of where we came in is talking about the story that the housing stock itself tells and how that plays into uh the comprehensive plan. So, go ahead, Jim. All right, so the first story that we want to tell, talk about is the current housing stock. And so as you can see, we have, um, we decided to look at the households in 2020, the projected households in 2030 as the comprehensive plan is for 10 years. Um, and those numbers were developed by the uh population projections that we got from the city. Um, we also took into account the current number of units. And then one piece that we know to be really important based on the city plan is zoning. And so what Anna did was took a deep dive into Charleston's um zoning codes and was able to um do an analysis on what was the maximum number of units allowable by current zoning. So is this something that needs updated? Is this something that needs changed to account for the number of people that will be here in 2030? So as you can see, we have about 84,000 households in 2020, 97,000 projected households in 2030. We have 93,000 um current number of units, but then we have, there's a lot of room for zoning. You can see is that number is almost 174,000 units. Then the next part of our analysis was breaking this down by zoning category.
Harrison, I did have one question. When you said by the current zoning, are we talking about current zoning in the city of Charleston or the landscape of West Ashley, Johns Island, James Island? Because some of that is actually within the county. And then of course, you know, you know, so I, I'm, and so I'm curious as to, are we talking about just our zoning and lots or, or properties that are currently within the, the city of Charleston?
Anna.
Our study area was inside the urban growth boundary. So it's a combination and it was um allowable zoning density within the urban growth boundary. So there is a bit in the county. So um I think Jim and Chloe as planners could probably say it a little bit better. But it's generally inside the urban growth boundary includes an area of overlap between the city and the county where they work together from a planning perspective. Jim, do you want to go into more detail on that or?
Yeah, I think um, as, as most of us know, um, there are lots of areas that are, um, you know, lots of subdivisions and neighborhoods that are kind of mixed city and county um incorporated. And so uh we have a lot of, especially out on uh Johns Island and James Island, we have a lot of um areas that fall within multiple jurisdictions uh within the urban growth boundary. Um, and I think for, for our planning purposes, we thought it made sense to stay, um, to, to look at the housing stock um within the urban growth boundary as a whole, uh rather than try to um, you know, kind of extrapolate different things from these little pockets of, you know, one city home here and um so on and so on. But I think one, one thing to note here as well with this, you see this huge number, um maximum number of units allowable. Um, a lot of that includes things that aren't homes, of course. So we have, you know, we have residential density that's allowed in our zoning code uh for industrial properties um and things that aren't being utilized as housing, but are still gonna uh be included in that count. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
And I have one other question. Your title says housing affordability analysis. Do these units represent all the affordable housing or just all the units in the area?
They include all the units in the area. And then as we get further down, this is kind of broken up into sections in, in the final deliverable, it'll all be together. Um, but this is all households and then we'll talk more about particular affordable housing, housing units farther.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so then here we have broken down the total housing stock by zoning category. Um, and for the purposes of presenting it, um, we worked with the planning department to break down into different categories. So obviously there are more than these seven options of zoning. So there's more than commercial, mixed use, industrial, Daniel Island and so on. Um, but for the purposes of presentation, we decided to group into these zoning categories. Um, so you can see that how the different zoning categories are um seen in different areas uh in Charleston. Okay, and then one of the other really important pieces that our team was tasked with was understanding this idea of being cost burdened. And so someone is, someone or a household is cost burdened when they're spending more than 30% of their income on rent or mortgage. And then this is taken from HUD's definition of being cost burdened. And so what we found was over 40% of people in the city of Charleston are cost burdened. So that means over 40% of people are, are spending more than 30% of their income on rent or mortgage or on their housing costs. Um, and we'll look at the next slide to understand how important that is. Okay, so really quickly, just to understand this analysis, on the right hand side, you'll see a picture of a beaker. And this is for illustrative purposes only. So how the blue goes into um the 875 and how it's measured up, that is not directly indicative of the numbers in Charleston. This is just for illustrative purposes. I'm just wanted to frame by saying that. Um, so again, as we said, over 40% of Charleston households are cost burdened, which means over 40% of them are spending more than 30% of their pre-tax income on housing needs. And so how we can take this illustration is that it's a compounding effect and that when people are forced, there's, if there's not enough inventory, there's not enough supply for them in their affordable bracket, they have to then jump into the next bracket. So what this illustration shows is that there are the blue level. That's how many households need affordable housing within the range of zero to 625. But there's only so many affordable housing options. So what happens is these people have to jump into the next and they take away some of the inventory from the people who would have an affordable range from $625 to $875. Um, and just a little bit more context, these numbers came from um the AMI values uh that the that the planning and housing department use most often. So then just to continue on that illustration, we can see now we're actually looking, the red range of people um are those who their affordable housing would be between 625 and 875 dollars. And so when they get poured in, most of their stock is already gone. And so what they have to do is then they jump into the next level of stock. Um, so when a resident spends more than 30% of their income, they pull from the affordable inventory of another group of people. And again, the word compounding has come up, this has a compounding effect because the affordable supply becomes smaller and smaller. So you can see even in this case, um, the people who are kind of this darker blue, they're not getting any of their affordable housing stock. They technically should be where the red is, but because that stock has already been taken, they're unable to find affordable housing for themselves. Okay, and so we're moving on into looking at the housing supply versus the income. And so the important thing to preface here is that this is looking at supply only. So this is looking at um the number of units that would be affordable for a certain group of people. It is not matching me living in my house and how much I make. It's just looking at supply. And so what we see here is there are over 10,000 households who are in the 30% AMI bin. And so they're making less than $24,000 a year. Only over 5,000 units are affordable, are affordable for them. And so we can see on the far right column, we see this big mismatch. So there is a need for over 5,000 units for that income bin. And so that's kind of how you read this chart is you can look in the first column and we, we see the AMI income bins and they go up, obviously. Then we see the number of households who fit in that bin, so the number of households that are making that much money. Then the number of units that are affordable for those incomes, income bands. And then we can see the mismatch. Um, and again, just to reiterate, this is looking at the supply and not looking at individual people and their incomes together. Anything Anna or Jim want to say for this slide?
Yeah, I wanted to add to that, that what we were, our goal for this is to determine if the supply and the policy in and of itself were sufficient for everybody to be housed at an affordable rate. And it is a completely ideal situation. So imagine you kicked everybody in the city of Charleston out of their house and you tried to put everybody in a house with a market rate that they could afford. That the situation in Charleston right now, regardless of the choices people make, it's not possible to do that. Um, so we felt like that would be a very helpful starting point in terms of planning to ensure you could look at this and you could see are the number of units even available, regardless of the decisions people make about what neighborhood they would like to live in, what school district they would like to live in, um, just as a whole and by planning district. And that that would be very helpful for policy and planning in the future. So that was the goal behind this and to also make sure that the zoning in these different areas was um, um, that it was sufficient that density could happen.
I want to, can I ask a question? Um, I just want to make sure I understand uh this slide and the previous slide. Is this, the slide is on the screen now, is it suggest, said another way, is it that the greatest need for number of units is at that lowest income band? And then the previous slide, I think the way I should interpret that is that if we somehow could fix the um, the, the lowest income bucket stock, it would create sort of a self leveling upstream that would, it would provide more opportunities all the way up, maybe into the 50%, the 60%, etc. Is that how I should interpret that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, would that be, can I add to that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think um, so yes, and that's, that's not all. Um, you know, because what this is showing, Anna did a good job of explaining this, but this is just showing, do the units exist or not? It does not talk about actual availability, so whether someone else is living there or not, whether they have any plans of moving anytime soon. So it's just, do they exist? And not if they're available. And so there's still uh another layer of analysis that has to be done uh in terms of actual supply, actual availability. And that, um, for that, we're gonna be looking into the um percent of folks who are cost burdened and breaking that down, looking into the different income brackets. And so um, for example, our housing department uh has a uh, you know, a lot of their efforts are focused on the 80 to 120% range. And this, if you look at this, this would show that, well, we have an over, a surplus of that. But when you look at the reality of where people are living and what they're paying, it doesn't exactly match up. So we have to look at both. Does it exist? But then also look at availability.
If I could chime in as well, um, I think that this graphic um is more easily understood if uh with the following slide, um, that kind of puts it into more context. And so um, as Chloe just mentioned, if you were to look at this at face value, you might think, okay, we have uh, we might have a surplus of uh units affordable to someone making 100% AMI. Uh, but if you'll flip to the next slide, please. So here, um, these numbers are taken from the ACS, so they're not, um, they don't quite match up with what CDP has produced for us, but I think they're a good reference point. Um, and so just to be totally clear, they're not um coming from the same sources of data. Um, but you know, just as a reference point, um, I think they're helpful. So here you can see that, you know, there at that 100% AMI level, uh, we still have, you know, around 50% or more cost burdened uh households around the city. So I think what you're seeing on the previous slide is that while we might have units, we don't have the people that are making that um bracket occupying a lot of those units. And so uh that's kind of the idea we, we, we wanted to kind of wrap our head around. Um, you know, how does our supply stack up with uh, with what people are experiencing in reality? And what we can see is we kind of have an inefficiency, if you will. I mean, obviously this isn't, this isn't a complete idealized world uh where we could take people out of their homes and then put them in one that they, that would be perfectly affordable to their situation, which is uh, we wouldn't want to do and is also unfeasible. Um, but, so I think these two slides together kind of paint a, a clearer picture that, you know, our, our real problem is that we have people that are living in homes that aren't really necessarily within their um affordability requirements.
And I think the other way to frame is to think that the, the slide previously is devoid of people's choices and it's devoid of outside factors except for the available units. So I might not be able to live in Daniel Kanehoi because my job is over here and I don't have adequate transportation. And so whatever unit may not be available to me in that situation. But the previous, this slide is solely just looking at me as having a certain income and then looking at the housing supply. So it's not looking at me as an individual necessarily. And so I think that's just another important framework um that we have to keep in mind.
And I'm, I'm glad you put that into context because uh my job might be on the peninsula, but the only affordable housing is way out on Johns Island and I don't have a car. So, you know, I'm, I'm glad you added that context to the discussion because that was in my head. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And so I think, like we said, it's, it's important numbers to know and to see even devoid of choices, do we even have the stock? And then we add in choices and see how does it fare. Um, so I think Jim, if you go to two more slides, we do take into account choices. Okay, so what this does is it takes into the choices of people staying in their current neighborhood. And so this is the supply, the necessary supply needed to account for cost burdeness, to account for future residents, so those who would come from now until 2030. Um, accounting for those two things, what sort of supply do we need? And so these are the total number of units. Um, and in, in the final handoff, they will be broken down by AMI value like you just saw. So it'll say, out of this 600 units, we need X amount at the 30% AMI level. We need X amount at the 50% AMI level and so on and so forth.
And how did we get to that number? Uh, maybe I missed something in the explanation. How did, how did you determine that there are 600 people that are currently living on Kanehoi? Or will be living on Kanehoi that need this? How are these numbers determined?
So we, we pulled in different um commercial data sources to help us with this, to um enhance what's available in the census um in order for us to create, you know, custom aggregations that jive with your planning districts. So our commercial data sources are 95% of households um at the, at a grant, at an address point level. So in that way, we were able to aggregate in a variety of ways and some of the data that we're gonna be providing the city even goes down to neighborhood in terms of who's there and what's the family income or the household income like.
That's a huge pressure on West Ashley right there. Uh, I'm just noticing that. Thank you.
And our assumption also Donna is that the um, the configuration of the neighborhood will be steady between now and 2030. So we um, it, for, for the sake of projecting, if for example, uh, certain district had 20% at one AMI, we projected the population increase, but that that AMI level, what do we need for that to stay 20% so that you preserve the diversity within these planning districts?
And another important note is to eliminate housing cost burdens. Another important note is to eliminate housing cost burdens as well. So, you know, as we've shown, the city as a whole and the individual areas of the city are heavily cost burdened. Some more so than others. And so this is to reduce those cost burdens back to thirty percent. So this is another idealized scenario. It's not to keep the current level of cost burdenness. And you know, keep that same level to 2030.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you so much. We'll hand back over to Jim and Chloe.
Okay. So we didn't want to share all of that without also taking a look at how the city has been doing so far in terms of generating affordable units citywide. And so this this data here is reflective of all affordable housing development, whether it's the city of Charleston that's doing the development or the city of Charleston Housing Authority or a private developer. And this is a twenty year snapshot, so all units between since two thousand year two thousand. Thirty seven percent of all new units, all new or preserved units in the last twenty years were sorry, were built or preserved in the last twenty years, nineteen percent in the last ten years. Eleven percent of these were homeownership, eighty nine percent were rental. Eight percent were for the area median income range of households making between eighty and one hundred fifty percent or often called workforce housing. Twenty percent were for those making sixty to eighty percent, the area median income. Twenty one percent making for those making thirty to sixty percent, the area median income and fifty one percent for those making up to thirty percent of the area median income. A lot, the way that funding works for affordable housing oftentimes has expiration dates on when that affordability restriction is no longer required. And so one hundred forty eight units, the affordability of them expired for one hundred forty eight units in the last twenty years. Based on the current schedule, five hundred seventy nine more units are scheduled to expire by 2030. And at least twenty six percent of all of these units that were built since two thousand were partially or fully funded by the city. So, yeah.
I have a question about that. So even though we're looking at raw numbers of what units are either affordable, be they homeownership or rental. And originally in this, originally at the beginning, we talked about underrepresented. So on a on a on a basis of who is utilizing our units that are that are partially or fully funded by the city, where does that stand? Because if we're talking about affordability and in a and black African American were underrepresented in the conversation, are they also underrepresented in the use of the affordable housing units that are either available or would potentially become available?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Erica. Could you could you repeat, please?
Essentially, what I'm asking is are are the folks who are occupying the these units that that are either set to be expired or hopefully will come online? Have we where where does that demographic land? Between represented and underrepresented?
Gotcha. I do not have an answer for you in terms of I have not done that analysis. But I will say that the number of units that expired since two thousand would have been higher without were there no intervention. So there's there are opportunities for intervention to preserve affordable housing units. So a few several hundred were preserved since two thousand. It kept that number lower than it could have been. So it's it's not a done deal. It's not. It doesn't it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to expire if there are interventions. And we have housing staff here that can speak more to that and that might be able to answer your question better than I can. Like that's a little bit more in in their realm of of the work that they're doing.
Sure, this is Matt O'Doll with the Housing Community Development Department. I I'm not sure I still totally understand the premise of the question, but I'm happy to to chat with you offline to drill further down into it. And as Chloe said, we have an understanding of which units are expiring. But we'd have to do some more analysis on, I think, to answer your question.
Okay.
Any other questions on housing analysis? Before we move on?
I do. And I think this might I was I had to deal with something for a minute. So this might have to back up on Erica's question. Is is there a plan as these expire to fill the bucket? In other words, there needs to be an equilibrium plan because I know that currently there have been some plans that have come before us where we've been, you know, given affordable housing in perpetuity, which is kind of a new thing. Usually it had a ten year or twenty five year timeframe and people began to notice that twenty five years is kind of in a mortgage time. So essentially, if somebody owns the house for its entire twenty five years and then, you know, pays the mortgage and then sells it for whatever reason, they've lost it. So I think we need to think about what I would call an equilibrium plan where things are going out of this bucket of affordability and coming into this bucket as we as we move forward. And back at the very early part of this, we were talking and I a question came to my mind. It says, just because we have enough by zoning, is it enough in the proper places? And we we kind of I kind of grazed on that and we kind of said something about that. But I want to just reiterate that, that we have to make sure that we are not placing affordable units in in places where there isn't a transportation hub or there isn't the work. Like for a lot of people that work on the peninsula, a lot of people that work on the peninsula require affordable housing. And if you, you know, if the zoning is appropriate in outer West Ashley for that, that just makes it inconvenient and burdensome on other levels to bring them in. So I just want to reiterate that point. And I know that that we're looking at affordable housing here now, but when they broke down the zoning, there was an element of commerce in there. And I think we need to continue to think about about affordable commercial space too, for these small businesses so that people can kind of live, work and play if they're an entrepreneur in the same space. So thank you for those that opportunity to comment.
And before we move on, I'm sorry, Anna.
Oh, that's good. I just wanted to say in in at the planning district level, the story is still the same. So the different ways that we've looked at it so far, the zoning is sufficient. So I just wanted to comment on that before we move forward.
I just I wanted to just say thank you for this team. I mean, to the team, I think we all sort of knew intuitively that we have an affordability problem in Charleston. I think what this data does for me anyway is it communicates very clearly the magnitude of the problem. You know, even if we replicated the highest number of unit production in any year that was on that graph you showed us, Chloe. You know, we're still drastically below where we need to be. So, you know, this just crystallizes the the extent and the magnitude of the problem. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think there's some daunting numbers in this section of the presentation when you look at you look at the fact that we have eighty some odd thousand units available now, I think was the number. And there's zoning available for double that or more than double that. Yet are so many in our community feel like overdevelopment and huge buildings are you know, such a big challenge for our community. But then you look at the number of or the deficiency in affordable units. I did the quick math, they would fill eighty Joseph Floyd manors. So I mean, it is an interesting mix of things to be thinking about on the housing front for sure. It is sobering.
Yeah, I just I just wanted to add that we really appreciate all the great work from community data platforms and they've been a pleasure to work with. And I know the engagement team got some shout outs earlier, so I definitely wanted to make sure these these people felt the love too, because it's it's been a really tough project. And, you know, we've we've we have insights now that we've never had before and more more coming as well. So just a big shout out to that team and all the great work they've done.
Jim, Remy or Anna, would would y'all mind just saying very briefly what what is coming that we don't have? We're we're not presenting today, but that we will have along with the draft plan?
So I think one of the the biggest insights that is coming is cost burden is taking into account transportation. And so one of the stories that we heard from Jim and Chloe, as they kind of relate it to us, was that, yeah, cost burden as taking into account housing is part of it, but we also have to take into account housing and transportation. Because if I moved way out to get cheaper housing, but now my transportation costs had increased, that was that trade off. And so part of what is coming is cost burden numbers, again, by planned district that take into account both housing and transportation as factors that contribute to the cost burdenist. And so as I imagine those cost burden numbers go up even more when we take into account transportation. So that is, that's probably the biggest insight that's also coming that wasn't in this presentation.
And then I think the the underlying data sets and GIS deliverables that CDP is going to be giving us, I think it can't be understated how important that's going to be. I think for us and for the Housing and Community Development Department, there are going to be incredible resources that we can go to to answer some questions that we didn't even, you know, have the capacity to ask at this point. So we're going to have, you know, all of the data that they have created for us and then some other stuff that's been organized and compiled in a really helpful way for us. So we'll get the keys to the car and and have the ability to do some of our own analysis.
Yeah, thanks, Jim and Chloe. You guys have been a pleasure to work with you. And I always look forward to our our meetings. So we've we've really learned a lot too. I think in and I've had multiple conversations about different ways that choice does play in, right? And that kind of Donna, like you were talking about, it is really important to separate choice to look just at the stock. But then we do have to take choice and we have to take context and we have to take all this into consideration. And so we've really enjoyed getting to learn about that as well.
I want to bounce off of Jim's comment. That's good to hear that in addition to the sort of overview that we've been giving, there's specific buckets of data that are going to be that are compiled under different headings or analysis so that a secondary layer of analysis can be put on that. You know, maybe this time next year if it's necessary, but that the data is being given right now to to y'all for that for that number crushing. That's really encouraging to hear. So thank you for that.
And I think, you know, for me, sitting here, listening to both the community engagement presentations and then this and particularly Remy with what you just said about the transportation piece. I this just really highlights to me the necessity of emphasizing transit oriented development like that that that's just going to be a really important piece of the future of this city. If it's if this region is going to work, we're going to have to combine the availability of transportation with the availability of housing. Those two have just got to work together. So, you know, from my standpoint, that's really what these two presentations we've heard today sort of highlight for me, among a lot of other things, but but that's an important one.
And also the development of jobs, we go out and market to bring economic growth here that we start talking about, well, if you're going to build a hotel somewhere and we know that we're going to need, you know, workers for that hotel, what are your thoughts about your employees and how they can be, as Harry mentioned, transited in or housed? You know, that becomes part of that development discussion that we don't just, you know, okay, great. We have a new hotel with job opportunities, but everybody's got to live in the hinterland to get there. That doesn't that doesn't help in the in all the problems that are created there secondarily. So it's good to hear that we have, we're going to have that information to begin as part of that conversation to somehow incentivize economic development as well as affordable housing within that, you know? So that's really, that's good, good news. Thank you so much.
All right, Chloe, I think we're ready to move to the next presentation.
All right, y'all have room in your brains still for the next part? Right? Passing it to Andy.
All right. Just trying to share my screen here. All right, can y'all see that? And hear me, okay?
Yeah.
Well, hello again. I'm Andy Stern at Wagner Ball in New Orleans and thanks for this opportunity to talk to you again. The planning department asked us to just review with you briefly, since you've heard some of this already over the past few months, just to review the framework of our work and then zoom in a little bit on some of the particular areas of of that are that are particularly suitable for a variety of different reasons for say for development or for redevelopment or for or for revisiting based on their safety from flooding to highlight that word again from earlier in the conversation. So I'm just going to go through quickly. Go through quickly the overview, some overview slides here. And and then I'll spend a little more time on on some zoom ins because I know the screen is small for everyone. And to give you a chance to ask ask some questions and would welcome questions. I've also got Lex Agnew from our office here to help me with any more more detailed questions. So just a brief overview here of our approach. We looked at the, we were charged to look at the land and water context in Charleston for the cop plan. We started looking at elevation zones and identifying risk for various different types of of water, water risk based on where you fall relation to sea level. And then we looked at the watershed impacts. So how do you affect your surroundings and your neighbors? How do your neighbors impact you, your upstream neighbors? How does your runoff affect your downstream neighbors? How does land cover within your watershed affect affect flood risk? And then we did an environmental sensitivity overlay. So coming up from the sea, you have marsh migration, some other sensitive environments along the coastal edge. And then working from the top down, you've got some particularly sensitive upland forest conditions and otherwise across the city and the region sensitivity regarding tree cover and infiltration in the soil, different types of soil infiltration for runoff. So here's kind of the overview of the elevation map. And I should say that these are all still kind of draft right now for the next little while. So kind of an overview elevation map. This was the part of the environmental sensitivity analysis, looking at marsh migration through different sea level rise scenarios. So what areas are at are at risk, what marsh current marsh areas are at risk of being lost? And where will that marsh naturally try to migrate as sea levels are projected to continue to rise? Tree canopy analysis, these are all the regional maps in the, in the final data set to the city. This is all GIS based, so it's zoomable to any, any level. And we've also produced a set of maps per each of these focus areas and then even a little more zoomed in. What I'll show you today to get down to a final level of resolution. So tree canopy and where it's been lost over the last fifteen, fifteen to twenty years or so. And then soils analysis. So where are soils best for infiltrating stormwater or runoff? And, and with all of the benefits that come from that within watersheds and downstream conditions. I'll just hold here for one second. One of the, one of the key balancing acts for the future in Charleston is this high ground condition. So in many, in many environments around the city, the highest elevation, the highest land elevation corresponds to sensitive ecologies, sensitive cultural histories, and also sensitive soil types. So the places where you might naturally choose to concentrate development on high ground have a suite of factors that need to be balanced and weighed against those choices. That's something that we're not necessarily recommending what that balance is through this process, but that'll be the work of the city moving into policy going forward. So we also looked at different watershed types, classified watersheds by small and large. That's important because the larger watersheds tend to have more of that compounding risk as you move downstream. So kind of like the housing analysis showed, if you have that, if, if the bottom rung of the ladder is overburdened, you have compounding risk all the way up, similar in a watershed, depending on what happens at the top. If you're running off too much water at the top of the watershed, that flood risk compounds all the way down. And if you're in a large tidal watershed, the, the increasingly high tides coming up from the bottom from the, from the sea can compound flood risk when it rains all the way up through that system. So that works both ways. Within the watersheds, we looked at structure types and vulnerabilities. This was based on the vulnerability analysis by Nima Fernley finished just recently last year. So we use their same criteria and their same data that the city already had to get a handle on how many properties are at risk in addition to hyper runoff to expect. So that's basically looking at properties in the flood plain or properties built before the new BFE requirements. And so all of that analysis together creates this sort of composite view. So we've, we've split the city and the region into three, basically three zones, a high ground, an adapt zone, and then a tidal flood risk zone. Within each of those zones, there's, there's a differentiation between high impact and low impact. That is properties that, and watersheds where that compounding, that risk of compounding risk is greater, relatively greater or less. So that's the distinction within that color, color change within. And I'll zoom in here and we'll look, take a closer look. So this, this is not to recommend that all development or all attention should be focused on the high ground. There are different strategies throughout each of these zones and like I mentioned, different trade offs that need to be weighed. One of those is landscape type and ecology. So working from the bottom up from that tidal zone, you have the coastal edge community. This is the marsh, salt marsh wetland and where that salt marshal tend to migrate. Through the adapt zone is predominantly a lowland flood plain and then working up the sides of some of these ridges, a natural barrier island ridges. And then the upland ridges themselves, areas such as the Maybank Corridor on John's Island or Clement's Ferry Corridor in Kane Hoi, these higher ground upland ridges with sandy soils more, much more suitable for infiltration. And then throughout the developed part of the city, opportunities for reforestation and protecting existing tree cover. So all of that analysis together, we come up with four strategies, grow, defend, adapt and reserve. And I won't get into too much specifics here, but it's not, these four strategies don't correspond to the zones, high, high ground, adapt zone and tidal flooding zone. Reserve, for instance, runs throughout, we talked about the tree canopy, salt marsh and upland forests. And adapt can mean a whole suite of things, depending on where you are. These, these zones, I should say, these zones are subtly different across the city. High ground, adapt zone, tidal flood risk, they change. There's a couple of feet difference perhaps across different areas based on local characteristics. So that's also not cut and dry. This is a pretty nuanced look at, at the city. So broad strokes here, where does grow, defend, adapt, reserve play out across those elevation based zones? So naturally growth should make more sense and may adapt in the high ground. Defend means different things where you are, depending on your risk, whether that's risk from tidal flooding or risk from a compound flood that is a high tide and a rain event happening at the same time. Adapt throughout, reserve essentially throughout. And in the, in the broader analysis, the more detailed information to the city, there's a, there's a whole matrix and suite of things. It's broken down per risk zone, per place. These aren't, these are policy recommendations. These are physical features. So some of these might be more appropriate for a homeowner to do on their own land. Some of them are more civic scale design ideas, physical space ideas. So there's, there's much more information. That's kind of a overview of our analysis, the concepts and some results. And a lot more where that came from for the city to parse through. Maybe I'll pause there for a second and see if there are any questions. Coming up here, I'm planning to go around focus by focus and take one particular place to zoom in and, and just see what, what these mean.
Very quick question.
I have a quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Donna. The, the map that you showed probably four or five slides back that showed the drainage and the poor drainage area, which was predominantly pink, I believe. At least that's what it showed up on my device. Is that taking into account development in those areas? Or is it just the condition of the soil underlying the development? So for example, the peninsula and Daniel Island were both showing poor drainage. Is that from the permeable surface or are you talking about the soil beneath?
This is the soil beneath. So this is, this is irrespective of the, of the land cover, except in certain places on the peninsula, soil data wasn't available due to the existing land cover.
Thank you.
Sure.
You have a map that's associated with your colored adapt chart, if you will. This one. Is there an overlay map that shows where the, not the redevelopment property, but let's say undeveloped property is within all of those zones? Is there a map that overlays that, that you've done? So in other words, all this marsh migration area, how much of that is developed now? Or is there even opportunities there where we would kind of make a policy based on that?
I don't know if we've produced those maps only, only because it's so fine grained.
Right.
And especially on places that are largely built out where it's infill based development or redevelopment, you have to get in so tight. So if, if there are particular areas, and maybe we can revisit this question when, on some of the zoom ins and see if that's, if that's needed.
Particularly thinking about John's Island, James Island and Kane Hoi. Because large, there are large areas that are very quickly, we heard in the community engagement that development on James Island is too high and too, too much and too fast. And we, we know on John's Island that it's moving very aggressively also. And then with Kane Hoi, that's our high ground, but they said, please leave us alone out there in some respects. So it would be nice to know in those sensitive areas, you know, maybe where the key sensitive properties are that fall within some of these zones, maybe doesn't need a fine grain of the whole city. Maybe it just needs to be problem spotted a little bit, because that would create policy later for the, the planning department. I'm not sure if that's too much to ask. It's just kind of a, y'all know better than I do how hard that might be to do. But that's kind of the concept.
No, it's a, it's a great question. And I think we, hold, hold that thought for a second too, as, as we go through. And maybe we can see what layers, overlay layers are needed.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start with inner West Ashley. And then I'm going to, I'm going to take a further zoom here in a minute along the Sam Rittenberg Corridor. But just at this, at this scale here to see where the high and low ground roughly is occurring. So looking at the brown up to twenty-five feet, some, some areas very slightly above twenty-five feet. But most of the inner West Ashley areas in the kind of eight to twelve foot range or so above sea level, above current mean sea level. Here's those soil types again. So this area is large, is largely built out and doesn't correspond exactly to that sand infiltration on the high ground the way that other places do like John's Island or Kane Hoi. But still you see where the relatively better soils are for infiltration. Now green soil hydrologic group A, A or B. And then marsh migration in a three foot sea level scenario. So yellow or orange here being marsh that is at risk of being lost. And light blue being areas that would naturally see expanded salt marsh area. And so the composite map, and you see the, this area of green, of darker green along the Sam Rittenberg Corridor where the, so that, that represents, I'm just going to hold here for a second to look at the recommendations on the left. I'll, I'll explain that darker green here on the next slide. So inner West Ashley significant areas are outside of the hundred year flood plain, which is, which is good. But within, and within the flood plain, many structures were built prior to BFE. That indicates they might be built too low or below current regulations. And therefore, therefore at risk of greater risk of flooding from their upstream or downstream neighbors. High ground, like I said, primarily along Rittenberg. Areas well suited and for infiltration, soil well suited for infiltration in this area. And importantly here in inner West Ashley, a lot of the watersheds and urban watersheds are what we've classified as small watersheds where that risk of compounding effect from runoff is not typically as great. However, because the drainage system, there are so many constrictions in the drainage system, the potential for compounding flood effect is amplified in many areas here. We see that drainage connections under, under the Greenway or under Savannah Highway, around the Citadel Mall, Long Branch Creek, some of these areas where the drainage backups have clear, have clear consequences. So just zooming in a little bit on Sam Rittenberg, and I put this aerial map in in case you want to come back and reference relative hardscape versus see what's existing there. But that dark green area represents high ground with relatively low impact on downstream structures or communities. So that's places that are, that would, this analysis would suggest are most suitable for denser, denser development with, with a suite of mitigating stormwater features. But that have less potential to impact their surrounding structures in the watershed. So I think this reinforces a little bit the, some of the long range planning for this area as a potential site for greater density. Now, again, that's not something we're recommending, but that's a, a, a policy, a route for the city to explore through policy. Any questions here on inner West Ashley or this area in particular? I think this is, this is as tight in as the scale gets, Donna, so you can maybe imagine on a map like this where we could overlay those redevelopment zones.
Well, and I think I may have asked the question too soon because it's already these, these zoomable maps that you're showing sort of give, give enough of an indication as it is. So thank you.
Okay, I'll keep moving through. And this is just a little pit stop in each place. So there's, there's always more that could be shown. If, if, if anyone notices a gap or something that needs more elaboration, please let us know. So the same set here to see relative elevations. This might look a little more varied than, than actually in practice, this is a very flat, flat landscape. So we, we bumped up the contrast to emphasize the change. Again, we see soil types here. This is a pre, essentially a pre-development look at the soils in this area, especially in the lighter green up around outer West Ashley. There's a history of the phosphate mines that disrupted some of these characteristics. So those, those disruptions are not necessarily factored into this level of soil data. And then we see some of the marsh migration areas here moving up, tending to move up the creeks, more of the headwaters of the creeks, especially around rentals here in the kind of bottom left of this image. One of the primary places identified for marsh migration in the region. I'm largely undeveloped currently. And largely outside of the urban growth boundary, even beyond the frame of this map. And so we get to the overall risk and impact. This outer West Ashley area includes the upper areas of Church Creek. And that's a place with a high number of vulnerable parcels, high potential impact for everything downstream. Church Creek, the whole watershed basin. Much of the high ground is located in these high impact watersheds. That means it's especially important what happens on those high grounds in relation to everything else downstream. In this area, like inner West Ashley, waterways and flood plains are interconnected, both natural and manmade interconnections. So that has a tendency to multiply the potential impacts flooding. Soil infiltration is sometimes compromised by former uses like phosphate mining. This area you'll see in, or you saw in an earlier map of the tree canopy, high tree canopy loss in this area over the last two decades or so. And like I mentioned, marsh, marsh migration is high, especially in rentals creek. So zooming in here to the river road area. Just zooming in on this, on this portion of dark green, the low impact, high ground portion. You see in the lighter greens, these areas, so Church Creek is there kind of running left or upper left and bottom right through this image. Point here, here's Church Creek running through and then out here to the Ashley. So the creek bed itself and the areas closer to the creek bed obviously are at higher flood risk. But moving out into these dark, or to these lighter green zones, which is the high ground adjacent to Church Creek, is that high impact, high ground area. That means what happens here has a great impact all the way downstream, the rest of Church Creek. And it's especially important to consider stormwater and other water mitigation measures. So I'll pause here for outer West Ashley. If there are any questions, flip back to existing development back and forth. All right, I will keep moving. Down to James Island. So overall, also very low in James Island Creek, you see it's sort of in the middle there with a high risk of wetland loss in this three foot scenario. Some, some areas of wetland are more vulnerable than others based on slight changes in elevation. This, this isn't to say that all of that orange area will be lost. There are other kinds of strategies that can be used to, to sustain wetlands and allow them to accrete with sea level rise. Just identifying the risk, but more importantly, maybe for policy is the marsh migration corridors. And there's a lot of things that can get in the way of these lighter blue marsh migration paths, whether there's seawalls and bulkheads, roads, other kinds of drainage infrastructure. Those areas also tend to indicate possible locations for stormwater sinks. So places that can absorb, places where water tends to collect and absorb. So places that can absorb, places where water tends to collect and absorb. So there's a double benefit perhaps to considering reserving some of those or treating those areas in different ways. Elevation largely lower on, on James Island and surroundings. And then here we see the soil types. More or less corresponding to the higher ground along the kind of Fort Johnson Road out, out in this area. And then in the Riverland Terrace area. And that basically corresponds to the high ground, low impact zones, those darker greens. So we'll zoom in twice here, once in the Riverland Terrace and then down by Grimble Road. So here's what's existing. Mostly infill development potential in this area. Folly Road is, is an important corridor down to get down to Folly Beach, but also because it passes through this low point over James Island Creek. So there's a zone here in the middle, kind of where the expressway enters in with a high, high risk, increasingly high risk for tides coming up James Island Creek. But you see the, this Riverland Terrace ridge and Riverland Terrace. Dark green again, because these are low areas of low impact on, low impact for their surroundings on high ground. So it's kind of the top of the watershed here of these smaller watersheds, relatively smaller watersheds. And then down outer James Islands, kind of Grimble Road area. See what's here now, some kind of remaining pockets of heirs property and farmland. Which down in this area corresponding to some adapt stone, but also some of this area that is otherwise potentially more suitable. Or has less risk on its surroundings and is relatively high and protected. And so it's one of those areas where, where there's the, the trade off is pretty stark between the cultural context here and the importance of the cultural landscape versus, versus the metrics we use to suitability for development. Any questions on James Island? All right. Moving to John's Island. And this is, uh, this is as zoomed in as we're going to get here. I think this is a little bit more of a familiar, familiar case. The ridge of higher grounds along and parallel to the Maybank corridor. And within the UGB, so you see that in brown here, it's old sand ridge. Soil types. Marsh migration. Notice down here around Burden Creek, there's some projection to come up down around the executive airport. Relatively small watersheds, so relatively less impact for downstream communities and, and structures on James Island. Uh, John's Island, sorry. So I think this, this analysis corroborates in many ways, the Dutch dialogue study, also some of the previous plans, Jane, John's Island master planning and and existing plans along the Maybank corridor. Any questions for John's Island? And I'm happy to come back and answer any if they come up later. Okay, Kane Hoi, this is, uh, this is perhaps a place where the, the balancing act is most critical and most stark. You see the highest ground basically in the city is located in Kane Hoi, here in brown above 25 feet. This old sand barrier sand structure. Given its sand composition, its former dunes, former coastal dunes, it has high infiltration capacities. But that also lends it to suitability for this upland longleaf pine forest, survives in sandy soils. And I'll, I'll show that for us here in just a second. On the lower surroundings around Kane Hoi, in this John Field Creek area, Noel Creek along the Wando. This is the area of Kane Hoi plantation, in this whole area overlapping the high and low ground. But you see the potential change that may be coming to this area and landscape function over the next decade and more. Looking at the three level, three foot sea level rise scenario. And so I just want to be clear, this is not, this is not to take, take a position for development or no development that in that area. It's just to point out the natural progression that the landscape may be expected to undergo as sea level rises and the marsh tends to migrate. And then the implications here. So you see lots of dark green, which, which may seem suitable for, for building in many ways. Also happens to correspond to historically cultural, historically significant heirs properties. The longleaf pine forest, part of Francis Marion, as you move farther out, Francis Marion National Forest. So looking at the points here on the left, Kane Hoi has the largest swath of high ground in Charleston. However, it's ecologically and culturally sensitive. And much of this soil in this area has high infiltration capacity. So potentially benefiting if used, if used well, can benefit others downstream, other structures downstream. Large watersheds in this area would tend to compound flood risk, although there's few, little development there right now. And a significant marsh migration, which I raised. So zooming in, uh, this is the Clements Ferry corridor just above Daniel Island. So kind of closer in, you see five 26 kind of cutting across the bottom part of the image here. This is the existing condition. And what the risk and impact overlay looks like. More or less corresponding to the high ground. And then moving a little farther out. And you see the, the bend in the Wando, Mount Pleasant on this side. And Clements Ferry, this is Clements Ferry running through the frame here. Or the Francis Marion National Forest is up off the top of the page here. And then what that looks like with the risk and impact. So generally corresponding again to the high ground along Clements Ferry. And here you see in the hatch green here, that marsh migration zone in the three foot sea level scenario. Okay, and that is the end. So happy to go back through any other questions or elaborate. There's a document that's literally hundreds of pages with the analysis for each of these focus areas across the city. Which the city has, and I would encourage others to read closely. The rest of the process for us here looks like staying on call for a few more weeks to answer the questions from city planning staff as they come up. And as they begin to look at the policy implications going forward.
Questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to jump in and say once again, thank you to this team for another detailed analysis that, you know, we're starting to get, we're starting to get our glasses off and see our elephant for all of its different parts, water and land and housing and community. And so it's really good that each consultant took, took the baton and went deep with this so that we can make, you know, good policy, good recommendations and good plan. And, and once again, I asked my question too soon because some of these maps do really show what I was looking for. So thank you for that.
Good, you're welcome.
And I'll, I'll just Andy, go ahead.
Uh, just to, just to echo everybody else in the kumbaya moment here. Really appreciate working with everyone at the city. It's a, it's a, it's an amazing group, unique for city, especially of this size. And our experience working elsewhere, very high, high capacity, uh, city, city structure. So it's been a pleasure to work with all of you and to receive your, your feedback over the last few months.
Well, I would just say that you know, just another, as, as Ms. Jacobs alluded to, another prodigious set of, of presentation and a set of data that give us a whole lot to think about. And, you know, it makes me believe that, um, you know, this, this comp plan may have to evolve quickly, uh, because this is a whole lot to distill into a plan for any, for any group. In, in the short amount of time we have to do to produce a plan. So anyway, this is, uh, hats off to you for compiling all this. So thank you. Any other questions for, for our team from the Water Institute of the Gulf? Okay. Chloe, I believe now we have the citizen participation period.
Um, there's an optional, there's optional additional content. There's a settlement community project, uh, updates that I have two slides worth if you want to hear it. If not, you can share it another time and also have a glimpse of the schedule for this year. You want to do that? Okay. Okay, surprise content. So as Donna mentioned earlier, she's been helping me with, with this work. And this is in direct response to what you all saw a lot in the, the feedback and the listening sessions about the cultural preservation work and, and recognizing these long time communities that have deep roots and history. Specifically settlement communities throughout the city of Charleston. And so, you know, post civil war, there were distinct patterns of land ownership and settlement throughout the city of Charleston by formerly enslaved African Americans. And, um, and somehow few of these, if any, well, there are, Maryville does have this plot, as you can see, when the town of Maryville was incorporated. But for a lot of the communities, they were never really documented, at least in map format. So their location being identified with the extent of their boundaries and the names that they knew themselves at in, in any public available, publicly available maps. And so Charleston County's done work on this in their historic resources survey and we're, we're building on that. The, the locations identified for city of Charleston are scarce. And, um, and so we, we have been meeting with community elders and historians and other folks who have been working on this research to build out this list and this map so that we can, just as a, a foundation to work on that cultural preservation long term and incorporating that into our land use recommendations. So where we are right now is a, a working list and a working map. So I say working, bold, underline exclamation mark, lots of emphasis. This is very much still a work in progress. It is evolving as we have more conversations. A lot of these names may be known differently depending on who you ask. So, um, and, and I have a meeting with John's Island folks tomorrow for that list that's not here yet will exist hopefully as, as soon as tomorrow. So, but as you can see, it's a good percentage of the city. It fits into this category of settlement community or something like it. So it's exciting. This is my, this is my favorite part of the, the plan that I get to work on right now. And I'm, I'm glad that we're doing it. So any questions about this before we wrap up this update?
One thing Chloe, I'm noticing Turkey Pen isn't on James Island.
Right, I abbreviated Turkey Pen, Ferguson Village are part of Downcut.
Got it. Okay, okay.
No, I, I think I would just like to say Chloe, thank you for working this and that, um, given what we heard from our, in our first presentation day from the, we heard from the community. I think this is exactly what they would expect us to do. And I, and, and so that I'm, I'm pleased that we're paying at this level of attention. So thank you.
And I'll also just note, you'll see here that I have Wando instead of, that that's referring to the area of Canoia Peninsula. It's known to the community as Wando. So we, we use Canoia Peninsula more as a geographic reference. But the appropriate, the most appropriate cultural reference for that area of the city is Wando. So I'll be using that for this. Okay, um, so just a quick, uh, quick look at the schedule for this year. As you mentioned, Harry, this has got to come together quickly. So this month, the rest of this month will be focused on beginning to share the findings out with the public, drafting the plan. We'll continue that into February, wrapping up the, the draft plan polished, ready to present to Planning Commission. The February 22nd meeting, that will be for information only, so not a public hearing, no decision being requested. March is when we will, following that meeting, going into March, we'll be kicking off our second round of engagement. So gathering, presenting the draft plan and gathering feedback. We'll have a short window of time to be able to incorporate that feedback, make revisions and to come back to Planning Commission at March 24th meeting. And that will be for a public hearing. And then in April, we have a tentative date, but it's not confirmed yet. But we do hope to have a joint city council planning commission workshop in early April. So it's a sprint.
Comments by the commission?
Does the engagement team feel comfortable with that timeframe to reengage for the draft? Cause they're, they're going to be really sprinting there.
I don't know. Yes, they, they are aware of the schedule and are planning accordingly. So we've
Okay.
Work, yeah.
Okay, okay. Cause that looks intense. Thank you.
I, I would just say that the, you said there's a tentative date for April that isn't confirmed. I hope that maybe if possible, there's an effort to keep it out of the week that is Charleston County School District Spring Break. Which I believe is April 5th through 9th, if I don't, if I recall.
All right. Thank you for bringing that up. It's in terms of city council meetings, they typically get scheduled. Christopher, you said what, like a week or two out is about as far out as we can expect.
They get scheduled.
The workshop. Yeah, right. So, but we will definitely keep that in mind.
Okay. All right, Chloe or Christopher, the, our public comment period.
Yes, Anna Catherine Carroll, I'm going to call on you first. So your microphone has been enabled.
Thank you, Chloe. This is Anna Catherine Carroll of the Preservation Society of Charleston. And first of all, just want to say thank you so much to all of the consultant team members as well as city staff for all of your incredible work throughout the update process across the board. Really informative data has been gathered thus far, and we recognize that public engagement has been a challenge during this time. So we just commend you all. And that being said, our principal concern from the beginning of this process has been the compressed timeline for completing this major plan rewrite, especially pertaining to community involvement. Since early spring, we've been calling on the city to request a deadline extension to allow the most thorough engaged process possible. And as the originally projected deadline for completion was February of this year, we are asking for more clarification on how phase two will function. And we share Ms. Ms. Jacobs' concern for the engagement team's capacity to conduct follow up with such a short turnaround this spring between Planning Commission and City Council meetings. So we also ask that an update be provided on the status of a deadline extension request to the state of South Carolina, if there has been one. Given the critical importance of this plan, if any delay is to be formally pursued past the original completion date, we do feel strongly that the time necessary should be taken to get this right. So we thank everyone for their efforts so far, and we look forward to continuing to work together towards the best plan for Charleston. Thanks.
Okay, and now I'm going to call on Betsy LaForte. Your microphone has been enabled.
Thank you, Chloe. Can you all hear me?
Thank you, Chloe. Can you all hear me? Yes. All right. Well, thanks also to the entire city plan team for all the great work that's been put forth so far. And for the educational opportunity today provided in this special planning commission meeting. Similar to the Preservation Society, we feel in the spirit of working towards increased communication and engagement between the city and the public, as was highlighted in the key takeaway shared by the community engagement team. We encourage city staff to announce publicly sooner rather than later the specifics around the process moving forward, such as how and when the public will be able to review and weigh in on the draft plan before it starts moving forward through the final approval processes of commission and council. And like Chairman Lestane noted in his comments, being able to respond to the draft and collect feedback will be critically important for the success of this process. We look forward to hearing more and remaining engaged throughout. Thank you so much.
Great. Chloe, do we have anybody else?
No, those are the only two I can find up.
Thank you to the public for your comments. We'll take all those to heart. I think a lot of what the public had to say were echoed in the comments of the commission. So, well, uh, to Chloe or Christopher, is there anything else that we need to bring before the commission tonight?
This is everything.
All right.
Enough for you tonight?
Yeah. Well, thanks to everybody for your patience. Uh, this group is used to having to pay attention for a while. So, uh, not unusual, but, uh, to those of us who were able to be here, I really appreciate it. And, and I'll just echo what everybody else has said about the amazing work of the city staff and all of the consultants on all this. I don't want to belabor that, but, but I think I speak for all the commission when I say thank you for the amazing work you've all done. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn.
Labor, I think we're done. Thank you. All right, take care.